All right, roll call.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, December 6, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. President Nelson and members Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keyes, Troop, Witherspoon.
All right, stand for silent imitation.
Moment of silence, especially for those who are in harm's way. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you've helped us to come here and assemble in these chambers. We just ask by the power of your Spirit that you enable us to make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the city and its residents. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the November 15 city council meeting and bills for payment on December 8th and 15th, 2023. Councilmember Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keyes, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson.
Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Come forward.
Good morning, everybody. I haven't done this before, so I'm not sure process. I'll just go into it. I receive, I'm attempting to purchase a vacant parcel at 235 East 32nd Street from repository. My name is Patrick Groner Jr., by the way. The purchaser is my retirement account, so it sounds strange, but that's Patrick Henry 401K PSP. I was given a list of questions I think you guys might want answers to, so I'll read them.
Yeah, go forward.
Yeah. Is the property vacant? Yes, it's a vacant parcel. What are your plans or intentions for the property? I think it, I'd like to market it. I think it would be a good parcel to develop into a residential garage. The area, most of the homes do not have garages. The condition of the property is again vacant. Do you live near the property? I live in East Springfield, so I live in the county, but I do not live near the property, although I work on West 26th Street, so I'm in town every day. How will you provide for the maintenance of the property? I'll see that the yard is maintained and any debris if any, there's none on there currently, but if any is put on there, we'll be sure to see that's removed. And I have not received any code violations ever or in the past three years.
Does anyone else have any questions for him?
So you just want to use it for parking?
No, I'd like to market it. I think it would be, I think the market will receive it well.
Okay.
For, I think its highest and best use would be for somebody to put a garage there.
Oh, a garage?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of residential homes there, of course, and shared driveways and the like, so I think it would be received well for that.
Could you please provide the address again?
That's 235 East 32nd Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other repository sales? Any other repository sales? Any other repository sales? All right, moving on to public comments. Do we have anyone from the public to speak? If you could state your name and your, your municipal, you know, what municipality you live in, you no longer have to state your address.
I don't.
Correct.
I'm Derek Martin, I'm with the Erie Airport Authority. I live in the city of Erie, downtown resident. Before you, a document that was just passed out was the economic impact statement that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania required to be produced every, usually four to five years during the pandemic. They ran into some challenges. So what you have here is the economic impact of the airport from 2019, and they also did to see what the impact was in 2020 during that process. According to the study that was commissioned by the state, there was 956,000 jobs total payroll because of the airport was 46 million and the output was $136 million. I give you those numbers in the document so that you're aware of the impact the airport has on the community and the vitality that it has. There's been a lot of discussions in the community about the Fly Erie Fund. I believe the council had a presentation by Jake Row regarding the program, which is a chamber-led program. There appears to be a lot of questions in the community about the program, and is this something new? It's never happened before, so they're trying to understand what it is. The global pandemic had an adverse effect of the United States as well as an adverse effect on the airline industry and airports throughout the United States. Seventy-four communities in the United States have lost air service on United American Delta. Twenty communities lost all air service, Williamsport, Pennsylvania being one of them that lost all air service. A Legion Air Stop Service in Cleveland, they had seven non-stop destinations in December of 2021. The airlines offer employees early incentives which caused, created great problems in the industry for early retirements, as well as new entrance of low-cost carriers came in and increased the salaries. There are two federal programs that are available to the Erie Airport, the Small Community Air Service Grant, which is funded usually at $10 million annually, and there's 300 potential airports that might want to participate in that. The maximum award a year is 40 awards grants per year according to the Department of Transportation. The other federal program is called the Essential Air Service Program. The Erie Airport does not qualify for that program. That's why the Fly Erie Fund is a local initiative that's championed by the Chamber of Commerce, businesses, and public entities. These programs have been around since 1980, started in Colorado in Aspen. In early 2000, Wichita Metro Chamber of Commerce said Wichita County of Wichita, the city of Wichita, created affordable fares for Kansas. In that document, which is this, it basically talks about airfares impact on the business, attracting new businesses, retention of business, and keeping jobs in the community. The airfares affect families who live in the community, work in the community, and want to visit that community of Kansas, and also airfares affect tourism. Different states and different cities do things differently. The state of Ohio has a program where there's a four-to-one match. There's no such program in the Commonwealth. Pittsburgh community received some new air service from an airline called Breeze. Their local community groups came up with $560,000 to assist with that. The bottom line, in order for Erie to continue to compete globally for families enjoying the opportunity to fly in and out of Erie, we need community support, and the Go Erie Fund can help make that happen. As we approach 2024, we offer, I offer my time to the city council to brief the new counsel on any matters or questions that you might have. I'm willing to do a study session at your convenience, and thank you for your time.
Does anyone have any questions for him today with the rest of his time? He offered his time. We're allowed to, they're supposed to be directed through me. All right, thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, everybody.
Hey, morning.
Good morning.
For those who have ears to hear.
What's your name and residence?
My name is Minister Lauren Cooley. Okay, I'm down here in regards to your blighting program, your rental registration program, and your code enforcement program. Now, I'm here because you're responsible for these programs, 100%. Now, poverty has hit everybody. If y'all hadn't paid attention, and I see a lot of people coming asking for money. I'm not here asking you for money. I'm telling you, your blighting program is destroying the poor. It's taking the inheritance from the poor. Now, we all went through a crisis. First, it was COVID, which was at the fault of the city, everything was shut down. Then, it was the gouging of the wood products. I'm still talking about housing. Then the food and the gas prices shot up. And all I hear everybody down here talking about is give me a grant, give me this. The poor can't get your grants because they don't pay taxes. But you have criminalized the poor. You're condemning their houses, and that's all they have. They don't have nothing else. You need to get another policy. You need to check into this. Now, I had a meeting, I had to go to a court hearing about one of my son's houses with the Honorable Edward Wilson. We won that case. It was about rental fees. We bought a duplex. We told the city constantly, over and over again, we're not renting. We're exempt. We have several other properties that we are exempt from because we're not renting. Honorable Wilson understood that, and he, he was in our favor, and we won the case. Immediately, immediately, code enforcement, Jake Benny and Mike Lowry of, Mike Lavery of the blighting program started immediate process attack on our properties. Now, this is a warning to you. This is not to come and tell you that you can sit there and act like you don't understand this. Those who have ears to hear have become responsible to what I'm telling you. So if the city had a recession, the poor had a depression, meaning we were in worse condition than you would ever have been, this city had ever been, but everybody act like their recession is hurting them, start thinking about the poor. You need to reform this blighting program immediately, immediately, immediately. Now, they code violated me on a property on the west side and my property on 20th Street. Now, it's the middle of winter. I'm a contractor, and I can't meet their obligations. I'm a well-known contractor in this city. I have worked on many of the government buildings, projects, churches. I'm a well-known contractor and can't meet their requirements. Now, how do you expect the average citizen to be able to meet it? I'm done. You've been warned. Any questions? Didn't expect none. Know that there will be consequences if you don't hear what I just said.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, council. My name's Jaclyn Spry. I'm the Director of Planning and Neighborhood Resources. I am a resident of Mill Creek Township. I wanted to address my concerns regarding the proposed ordinance to permit non-commercial keeping of chickens and goats this morning. Please understand that I am not against keeping chickens and goats in the city. I feel there's a big benefit to city dwellers learning about and understanding where their food comes from. I consulted yesterday with two different local veterinarians in regards to this ordinance. They also expressed a great deal of concern. They acknowledged that if chickens or goat keeping is not done well in this city, the risk of animal suffering and human disease could be significant. The challenge that the city faces is to ensure that we are developing laws and enforcement methods that make it impossible to cause residents or their hens undue stress. The bylaws would address things like how to deal with keeping vernum to a minimum, finding ways to make appropriate feed and hay available to keep these animals healthy and comfortable, planning for the disposition of manure, et cetera. Proper enforcement or methods of policing or licensing of the program would prevent animal suffering and provide safe egg handling protocols. Planning and collaboration are needed to execute this program well. Code enforcement, the department responsible, or possibly responsible for regulating this program, was not asked to participate in the drafting of this ordinance. They were not asked whether or not they have the capacity or protocol, capacity or protocol to enforce these regulations. They were not asked their firsthand knowledge as to what is going on in our neighborhoods currently regarding chickens. Sorry. Council has asked of us to be transparent in our work, to use data to make informed decisions, to provide residents an opportunity to have input and to learn from other communities. We would hope that council would allow us time to do that. Are you aware that there are a wide range of goat species and sizes? There are dwarf goats that mature to a medium-sized dog, and there are also goats that grow to be about 300 pounds. The proposed ordinance does not specify the type of goat allowed. My point is, is that we need to slow down, understand the real needs of our community, and think through the processes and procedures that need to be in place, and implement this program in a very responsible way. I am respectfully requesting that council tables this ordinance today to allow us time to do our due diligence so that we can develop the appropriate procedures and processes to ensure a successfully administered program. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning. My name is Curtis Jones. I'm here, a city resident, born and raised. I'm here representing the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership. James Grunkie, our president, is also in the audience. Want to recognize the mayor's office and administration, council of the controller, who often gets forgotten over there, but works really hard for our community. I'm here to speak very briefly about the Fly Erie Fund. You have heard some of that, about that this morning. Some of you have heard about it in the news, and then, as well as a study session some of the council members were able to attend several weeks ago presented by Jake Row, our VP of Economic Development. The Fly Erie Fund is a public-private partnership in an attempt to generate revenue separate from the airport, which would give that entity or give that fund the allowance to support the airport and air service when it comes to airlines, when it comes to other enhancements, other projects related to the airport that simply the airport proper cannot do because of different restrictions and regulations. This is extremely important for many reasons, of which I don't have all the time to share with you, but it's important to remember the significance of, the economic significance of our regional airport. Derek Martin, the director, mentioned over 70 communities have lost air service completely. That could be potentially catastrophic for many businesses as well as universities in our region. And so that is why we are, you know, on this campaign and pushing forward and today asking again for your support, along with the administration, to help fund this, this fund and to help fund this work. We've had several conversations with other elected officials and municipalities, community groups, business groups, and we'll continue to do that same tour, sharing this information, giving clarity, answering questions, letting individuals know why, why is the chamber facilitating or leading this particular effort in relation to the airport? And we can answer those questions because again, those, there's certain regulations and legalities that prevent an airport from, from doing some of the things that this fund would allow us to do that will ensure and support and bolster air service for our region. There are several other partnerships, again, with Gannon University, other businesses in the community. This is a community effort, and again, today we're here to ask council to consider and strongly consider ways that you as a, as a body in the city, as a municipal leader, can support this fund because it will have significant benefit moving forward for our community. So again, we are asking that you consider funding. We've, we have a presentation, we have some information we've shared with you. Some of you of council were not able to attend that study session, if you would like. We can have another meeting, a Zoom, a Teams meeting to answer any questions for you, or just a phone call or a series of emails as well, that we can answer and provide more information for you and give you the most updated information that we have in relation to the Fly Erie Fund and the progress that we've made. We've made significant progress in the private and public sectors, and we'll continue to keep giving that message. Very briefly, and finally, we're not just coming to the city asking for financial support as a municipality or as a governing body. We are going throughout Erie County from one end to the other, giving the same presentation and reminding all of our municipal leadership throughout Erie County that this is a significant, again, economic driver, economic development tool, and a significant asset to our region. And it's a responsibility for all of us to pay in and to buy in and to support it. And so that's what we're here to do today, and we ask for you to consider that. I know there's budget issues and budget processes going on. I've had the privilege of being in your seat about 13 times doing city budgets, and so I get it. But I also understand that being in that seat gives you the opportunity to support significant and transformative and future legacy, quite honestly, endeavors for, for the well-being and the sustainability of our community. So thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you for your future support.
Mr. Jones, any updates on the potential charter to Florida, Orlando, and Fort Myers? People have been asking me about that, because if we're going to be looking at putting money in, we better be getting more than two or three flights from American Airlines.
Sure. There is a daily, and there are multiple meetings daily in communication and conversations with the airlines. First, the legacy carriers, of course, but then also the, some low-cost carriers that will provide those kinds of quick flights and less expensive flights to Florida specifically. So the answer to your question quickly is yes. The reality, the reality of the next question, which I figured you would ask, would be when, is somewhat out of our hands, because as every other business, the airlines are making decisions based on what the final in the bottom line can be. But the Erie, the Fly Erie Fund, excuse me, and all of the effort that we're making as a community, public, private, elected philanthropic groups coming together, it gives us a better, stronger story and case to make to the airlines that they will be supported. It's at the end of the day, they want to know, are people going to get on the plane and they're going to use those flights? I say yes, we say yes, we have to show yes, and that's a part of what this effort is. So we're doing that work, and I'll be on the front of those flights with you when you go down to Florida. Any other questions I may entertain? Thank you very much for the time. And we're available at the Chamber, Airport, the Airport Authority. I'll speak for them respectfully. I'm sure we'll be willing to answer any questions that you may have moving forward. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, council members. My name is Katie Kretz. I am the Executive Director of the Multicultural Community Resource Center. I am also a resident of Erie County, living in Fairview. I come today to discuss a little bit about what we're facing as a resettlement agency as it relates to our airport. Back in 2022, my agency made application to become a resettlement organization. That would make us one of three resettlement agencies here in Erie. Collectively, on an annual basis, now that we are a resettlement agency, between the three of us, we are having about 1,000 passengers come through the Erie Airport on an annual basis. So as you can imagine, when we first became, became a resettlement agency, we had two airlines coming into the city of Erie. A majority of our incoming arrivals were coming through Chicago, that was going to be their point of entry into the United States. With United pulling out, that now leaves all of our, our passengers, all of our clients coming in through JFK. They now come in through the point of entry of JFK. They travel to Charlotte, many times laying over in Charlotte, and 100% of our arrivals this year have been coming on, coming into the city of Erie on the 10:58 p.m. flight. As you can imagine, being brand-new to the United States, coming into a new city that you've never been before, 10:58 flight is pretty difficult to come in on. On the flip side of that, we also have staff that we rely on to receive these families, community, community members who are volunteering their time to receive these families, and it's, it's becoming very difficult. We're doing it, but it's certainly not the welcoming experience that we want to provide to these families. Again, as a citizen of the Erie County, I too have been very frustrated with, with the airport for all the wrong reasons. My assumptions were that they just weren't doing their job to get flights. I have taken time and spent a significant amount of time with Jake Row to better understand what the cause is, and it's very eye-opening when you actually sit there and you spend the time understanding what the difficulties are for our airport. I'm standing here as a leader in our, excuse me, our leader in our community, but also as a community member, asking for the support of our council and, and really taking a hard look at what this is going to do, not just for luxury flying, but for necessity flying, for our clients coming into the United States, for future citizens of Erie County. Again, as a nonprofit leader, I cannot commit money to this, but I will commit my personal time. Both my husband and I have committed to doing whatever we need to do to help push this forward, and I have full confidence that this will be what it needs to be for our city, and I ask you to do the same. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council File Number 16405, Official Ordinance 762023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $399,993 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure Thereof. This is a contribution from the Department of Justice for Implementing Crisis Intervention Teams. Sponsored by President Nelson, seconded by Member Flores. The Council File Ordinance Number 16405 has been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Oh, final passage, sorry. Council File Bill Number 16405, and now known as Official File Ordinance 762023, be finally passed by City Council. Council Members Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keyes, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 762023 by ye seven na zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16406, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $69,64602 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Be Received From the Enterprise the Enterprise Zone revolving loan fund for utilization in the flagship Commodore Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Keys, seconded by Member Troop, the council file ordinance number 16406 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmember Brazinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file number 16406 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16407, an ordinance creating Article 334, Responsible Contractor, defining the term Responsible Contractor-
Sorry, that one's being pulled.
Okay. Council file number 16408, an ordinance amending Part 9 Title VII, Other Public Services by creating Article 952 Honorary Renaming of Streets, Secondary Street Signs, to establish a process and procedure for the ceremonial renaming of streets in the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Keys, the council file ordinance number 16408 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Braz-
Mr. President, just for the record, today we were supposed to name that street for Sister Mary Miller. We're still going to do that, we should make sure the public knows that.
Yep.
We just felt that it would be more appropriate to do it under the new rule rather than to have people think we were sneaking one in.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
But, Sister, you'll get your street. Thank you.
Councilmember Brazinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16408 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16409-
Mr. President, move to, uh, what's the word I want?
Table?
Table, yeah. Big table. I, especially when Ms. Stride mentions the fact, which I brought up in caucus, that code enforcement doesn't have much of a clue as to what we're trying to accomplish with it. I, I also mentioned the multicultural thing. Some people are afraid of it. Some people like it. I have friends that have chickens in their backyard for years and have never had a problem. But until we know exactly how we're going to do it, I think we ought to sit on it and get it done the right way. If I don't get a second, then I'm a no. Thank you.
Voting to table, council members Brazinski, Faulkner-
No.
Flores-
No.
Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, Nelson.
No.
Motion to table passes four to three.
Just to clarify, there was, there was intended to be an amendment to that to remove the goat portion. So it was just going to be regarding chickens. There's two different ways to look at it. I, the current ordinance doesn't look at it as a program. You can either do this through a way of adding bureaucratic stuff, doing inspections ahead of time, paying fees and doing licenses, or deal with it in the prohibition side, which is how we currently do. So that was the intent. I had asked code. They, they told me no chickens. It was a pretty abrupt conversation. So anyways, on to number five.
Council file number 16410, an ordinance amending Article 142, Section 14203, to identify the boards, commissions, or authorities whose members are exempt from the residency requirements of Article 142. Sponsored by President Nelson-
Hold on, Lori. I think Chuck is going to be amending this one. Are we amending this?
Number five?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, never mind.
We're amending six, not five.
Okay, yeah.
Sponsored by President Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number 16410 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmembers Brazinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, and- and Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16410 by yea six nays one on first reading. Council file number 16411, an ordinance amending Article 143, Section 14302, to require employees to maintain residency in Erie County, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson and seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number 16411 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council.
There's, uh, there's an amendment to it. Oh, go ahead. There's an amendment to it that it would be within 15 miles of the city border. So Erie County within 15 miles of the border.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we're amending it to be within 15 miles-
Of the border, within Erie County.
Of the city of Erie border?
Yes.
Within Erie County.
That change was supported by both unions. It was softly supported by the fire deputy chief and opposed by the police chief.
Police chief was totally against-
Totally against it.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
So I, I wanted to make a comment. So, you know, there was good reasons that the union made for wanting the expansion of the area. And, you know, and ironically, you know, the expansion is not supported by the leadership of these organizations. But one thing I haven't seen is, you know, a program or any type of movement toward getting your employees to live in the city limits. The city has a lot of programs such as LERTA, where you can build a house and not pay the taxes for 10 years. Things, things like that. So I, so, so I'm kind of torn because, you know, one, I understand they want their people close, but you know, I want them even closer. I think that, you know, the, if, if timeliness is a factor in having your people being able to respond, that you should be responding with trying to use some of the programs and some of the tools that are out there to get your people to move back into the city.
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Mr. President? Yes. It's, to me, it's very important. We've been pushing and pushing to increase our numbers of residents in the city. Our job is to provide jobs for fire and police. It's not our jobs to tell them they can live outside the city and don't pay taxes, property taxes in the city, but yet take the money that the city give them and pay property taxes elsewhere. We've been talking for the last couple of years of building our numbers and bringing people back to the city. And here, we're talking about hiring individuals and let them move outside the city. It doesn't make sense. Plus, on some of the bad days, as example would be quarry and a bad snow day, one of our workers can be coming in on an emergency and the worker run off the road or slide off the road or have an accident, and he doesn't get here, or she doesn't get here. Living in the city 15 miles, there's nothing wrong with that. Thank you, sir.
Just to be clear, the ordinance has been amended to, is going to be amended to not include quarry. So this is, this is a, a vote as to whether or not we would like to allow fire and police to live in Edinburgh or not. That's basically the stretch of the direction on this vote.
Mr. President, historically, if I'm maybe a little off, but I think in all the years that Mayor Tulio sat in the big chair on the floor, he didn't lose much. He lost this residency thing through arbitration, and it's been sitting there that way since he lost that battle. I have a police chief that doesn't want it. I have a few guys that want to live out and shoot deer. It's wonderful. I love the guys. You know, I'm pro-public safety all the way, but I cannot make those kind of adjustments. And I agree totally with Mr. Witherspoon. We, and with Mr. Keys. We should have programs set up here. So when a new policeman comes in, we can say, here, here's a half a dozen places that you could look at here in the city that might be amenable to you. You know, once you're making over 100,000, maybe you want to find something else. But there's some pretty nice places in Erie where you could be a nice family person. Again, pro-public safety, but come on, guys, enough is enough.
Mr. President, I'd like to add that this ordinance is not going to resolve decades of disinvestment in ways of our city staff living in the city. Like, this ordinance can only address what is specifically in it. And so my understanding is that it has been essentially my entire life since 89, since that residency requirement changed. This specifically is addressing the southern part of the county. So folks will not be able to live in quarry. This is just merely extending, I believe, about an additional four and a half miles south because of the way the city of Erie falls. And we have a lake. It prohibits southern access to the city, which has a great interstate system. We also have updated technology since this current requirement was put in place in 1989. And so I think, given out of the four parties that are involved in this, the two chiefs and the two unions, we have agreement out of three of four of them on a compromise. And I think we need to lean into the fact of building on compromise instead of trying to solve bigger problems, which I agree, we should try to incentivize homeownership and residency in the city, but we're not going to solve that simply with this ordinance. And so the amendment of 15 miles from city limits simply adds about four and a half miles going south. So these folks who want to live in Edinburgh, who it might be cost prohibitive for them to buy in the city, which I completely understand as a renter in the city. So I, I, I fully support the amendments for this.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
We have to start somewhere.
That's already over.
We have to start somewhere, and this is a good start.
All right. Do we want to call for the vote?
Mr. President, does the ordinance have to include firefighters and police? I mean, because I've noticed in some cities have different requirements for different-
No. I mean, we can write it however.
Like, I mean, Pittsburgh is different.
Yeah.
Police and fire are different.
Yeah.
Their police can live 25 miles, but their firefighters can live up to 60 minutes. I mean, I, I don't know. Is that-
I mean, we're capable of doing it the same way Pittsburgh did.
We could amend it to be fire with the compromise and police with the current requirements.
There are contractual requirements. We have contracts with both the fire department and the police department that would govern those situations.
Yeah.
What you do is pave the way for what would ultimately most likely adhere in those contracts.
Yep. Any other discussion? Let's call for the vote. Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Good question. So what if, we have a proposal again. So who made the, the original motion and second?
President Nelson and Member Flores.
I didn't second that.
For the original ordinance, then the amendment was by Nelson and Faulkner.
But we could probably make that more efficient if it needs to be.
You know, so the, it could be a request for a friendly amendment.
Okay.
And if the, the person that made the motion and the second accept that amendment and allow that to go to a vote.
So, so Jas, so I just have to ask Jasma?
That's it. I assume you're in favor, Mr. President.
Okay.
You good with the amendment?
Yeah, I'm good with the amendment. Let's vote.
So we have a friendly amendment. So we have one motion pending before council, and that is a requirement that you, that all employees live in the county of Erie within 15 miles of city limits.
Okay. And for that, we're calling for the vote.
Before a vote, I will also add the fact that-
The amendment's covered. Now it's just the final vote for the final ordinance, for the first reading.
The key thing from Mr. Betts is that the decision's going to be made in arbitration anyway.
It could extend further.
I'm a no. Okay. Yes, for that reason.
I'm a no as well.
We have two noes so far, Lori. Keep on firing.
Okay, council file number 16411, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council as amended. Councilmember Brazinski-
No.
Councilmember Faulkner, Flores-
No.
Keys-
No.
Troop-
No.
Witherspoon. Witherspoon, you're a no.
Witherspoon, you're a no.
Mal, do you vote?
He voted no.
No.
I'm a yes.
Okay, the amendment fails to pass two to five. So this does not adopt on first reading.
Moving on to new business. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Somebody's got to make the motion to, I was waiting for the, for the veterans to, to do their thing. Mal, come on, man.
Second motion to, uh, to move the balance.
Mal's second. Any separations?
That's the Airport Authority?
Yep. End of the year. It's mostly, it's mostly transfers.
Any other separations?
How could they do transfers? There's no extra money in the budget. Man, I get confused.
Any other separations?
Yeah, just give us a minute. There's a- All right. Let's sit then. Just number five.
Voting on moving the balance, members Brazinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson. and Nelson. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, number five, sponsored by Councilmember Keys, seconded by Councilmember Troop, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, a resolution sponsored by Councilmember Keys appointing Erin Kerner of ten thirty-seven West Twenty-Fourth Street, Erie, PA one-six-five-oh-two, to a five-year term to the Erie Regional Airport Authority to replace Richard Wagner. The term will begin January twenty-twenty-four and end December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. They usually expire, I think, the first Monday of January.
So I'd like to make a comment. It's kind of ironic that the airport's here today. Ms. Erin Kerner is my appointment to the airport authority. She's in the audience today, and so I just want to take a minute to acknowledge that I believe she's going to be a great asset to the airport authority and to our community as she repatriates back to the city of Erie.
In that, in that context, I want to take a second to thank Rich Wagner. He's, we're trying to make sure that there's not people on too many boards at a time, and he's one of those guys that has faithfully served on a number of boards. He was formerly zoning, he's currently watering, will continue to be on there. I think, I think he might have been my appointment for reappointment last year for the water authority. And, you know, he's, he's Erie County Care Management, he's got a heck of a resume for service, so he did, did a great job there, and, and we're looking forward to having Erin, Erin fill that spot on the board.
Voting on the resolution, councilmembers Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Troop, Witherspoon, and Nelson. Resolution passes ye seven, na zero. I believe this takes us to committee reports.
Any volunteers to start?
I'll start, Mr. President.
All right.
Thank you very much, no report.
All right. How about you, Mr. Troop?
Mr. President, I reached out to the people at the downtown development, and they wanted me to just give a couple of updates. They wanted to congratulate the city on the downtown delights that they had, you know, that we had, great, great event. They said they broke the record for the skate rink, two hundred skaters. December eighth, they will host a Muppet Christmas Carol sign-along movie in Perry Square, so December eighth, there's a movie coming out for families. December fifteenth, they'll host the last Maker's Market of the Year inside the Boston Store with the Jazz Band. They were just awarded a hundred thousand dollar Neighborhood Assistance Program from insurance to improve program and events. They're continuing with their homeless efforts to try to educate our community on homeless and help businesses that are affected by that. And they started a new gift card program, and you can check that on our website, Erie Downtown Development Partnership. And also, they wanted to please remind everybody to shop local this holiday season, so that's, that's my report.
Question, since you're with the downtown partnership, are they in charge of the letterbox for Santa?
Uh, I could ask that and find out.
Do you, okay, well, Renee says yes. Can you find out if we can read some of the letters of the children?
Okay, so the letterbox...
That's for Santa to do.
I'm saying after the fact. I just want to see what our future generations are asking Santa for.
Santa needs to mail them back to us first.
Yeah.
That's going to be a lot of postage.
That's my report, thank you.
Onwards. A couple of community announcements, as well as updates from my committee assignments. I believe this is the first time since I have been on coun, appointed to council in February where I can say that the weekly calls for service for the police department are under a thousand. Even if it's only under by thirty-two, that's a good thing. And so we are in our second week in the row, in a row of under a thousand calls for service. So I thank the police department for what they're doing, as well as the community partnerships that they are building to try to prevent crime before it happens, and many other community organizations who are doing that as well. Overdose deaths continue to be a major concern. I ask everyday people to please consider requesting a script from your pharmacy for Narcan so that you can keep it in your car, you can keep it accessible. I've seen firsthand, being downtown a few times, of folks in an overdose situation. MHA and other organizations around the city and the county offer a free, very quick, online Narcan training. This is something that we collectively have to educate ourselves about a little bit more. And fortunately, Pennsylvania has expanded the opportunity so everyday folks can, can access Narcan, so we can all have that as a resource. So I please encourage you to do that. Speaking of folks who need our extra support, this last Saturday, I did my first shift volunteering at Our Neighbor's Place, which was at President Nelson's church where he pastors, and that is our seasonal overflow shelter for our unhoused community. On Saturday, fortunately, it was not full. However, on Thursday and Friday, the overflow shelter was full. So I just want everyone to take a second and let that, let that sink in. The overflow shelter was full. That means there was nowhere else for someone who is homeless to access a place to sleep that night in our city and county. So that is a collective failure, and I say that as a, as a city leader. An overflow shelter should never be full. So I please ask folks, Our Neighbor's Place continues to need volunteers and support. The shift was, you don't need any prior training or specific knowledge, just compassion and time. If you are interested in volunteering, the email for that is K W I C K E R T at E U M A dot dash E R I E dot org. That's Yuma-dash-Erie. You can also find more information at their website and on their social media. Morning shifts are at the crack of dawn. If you're a morning person, I did the seven to eleven P M. shift, and I'll be doing that again on Saturday. So I encourage folks, don't be afraid, these are our neighbors, and they need all the help and support they can get. Additionally, thanks to the Organization Voices for Homeless Advocacy, they provided a, and produced a new resource guide. It's two pages, it offers food, shelter, various resources for the unhoused community. I would love to see that available right in our lobby here at City Hall. And for any other community leaders or folks in public spaces, please consider downloading that document. It's available, if you search Voices for Homeless Advocacy, you go on GCAx Facebook, it's kind of circulating all throughout social media right now, so please check that out. Lastly, there's a, lots of great efforts around town to ensure that all kids get to enjoy the joys of the, the holiday season. I want to call out one specific toy drive. The Princess Yolena Hall Memorial Toy Drive is happening right now. If folks are interested in donating, they can donate to the fund at any Key Bank. But if you want to donate new toys or learn more, you can call eight-one-four-three-two-three-eight-eight-two-six. They're also going to be at the Mill Creek Mall on Saturday from ten A M. to nine P M., so essentially the whole time the Mill Creek Mall is open. And it's right where the K Jewelers used to be, it's next to the GameStop. I was there on Saturday volunteering with them. They will wrap your Christmas gifts that you buy at the Mill Creek Mall for free in exchange for a donation to the toy drive. So people came, they dropped off their, their gifts, they got them all wrapped, they finished their shopping, they came back, picked up their bags of beautifully wrapped gifts, and gave a donation for this great cause to remember a little girl from Erie who passed away at the tender age of six to leukemia. And so please turn out to the Mill Creek Mall this Saturday to support the Yolena Hall Memorial Toy Drive. That's my report. Thank you, President.
Thanks. Mr. Brzezinski?
Yeah. It's beginning to look all like Christmas. Take the time to drive around our city at night when the lights are on at Perry Square. Don't forget to look at the Warner, don't forget to look at, I still call it the Tulio Center over there, which it isn't, I know. Get down to the big front and see the magic in the lights. We have a beautiful, beautiful city, and we should take a lot of time to treasure that city and maybe move into it. That'd be a nice thing, huh? All kidding aside, it's the holiday season. Have fun, be safe. Everybody's kind of buckling down with parties and getting everything ready for next year. So my reports in January will let you know more about what's happening with the Port Authority and the Civic Center and whatever else the next president wants me to do. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Ms. Flores?
I don't have much to report. The next Blighted Property Meeting is going to be at nine A M. on December thirteenth. Those are open to the public. They are at nine A M. through Zoom. If the community would like to be vocal with the department that is doing the code violations, this is where you start to get things going, to have your case heard, also to be able to see if there's avenues to be able to rehab things before it gets to the drastic level of losing your home. We want people to live in the city, we do not want people to lose their legacy, their family legacy of a home that maybe their grandmother left them or something of that nature. So we do have to do our part, we have a home rehab program that we need to start offering technical support for people to have.
I'm sorry.
Right now, with Christmas going on, the next EMTA meeting will probably be in January since Monday, the twenty-fifth is Christmas Day, and with us coming to a close, everybody be really safe, make sure you're giving yourself enough time to travel. Our winters are kind of brutal if we do not prepare for them. I know that a lot of us will just get in our car and keep going, but we do have to be cautious for pedestrians who are walking in the streets and then trying to get through our less than favorable weather in the winter months. So please do our part to make sure our community is safe and that we're looking out for kids and elderly who are using walkers and mobile devices to get around. Thank you.
Thanks, Jasmine. Mr. President, why are we off air? When we had one person running this program, it ran. Now we've got three people plus cam, and it's not on TV anymore. And you know, my older folks out there, my buddies are going to want to know why it's not on TV.
I think it's on Facebook.
It's off the air. It might be on YouTube or something.
I think that's the Zoom screen.
Yeah, I don't know. Are we on the air, Monica?
We're, we're live.
Yeah, we're live. We're live on Facebook.
My bad. Techno-moron that I am?
Off-air Zoom.
I mean, is, it's a huge, for anyone watching online that's wondering what he's talking about, there's a huge sign on a TV and right in front of him saying, "We're off air." So that's, it's a very reasonable conclusion to come to.
Thank you, Brzez.
Mr. Keys?
First, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays during this time of, of giving and of celebration. Just take time in your hearts to remember those who are less fortunate and any way you can, one of the ways you can share and give is give your time or gifts or support to organizations who are helping make sure that everyone has a Merry Christmas and a happy holidays season. I'd like to piggyback on what Councilwoman Flores said. I urge the Blighted Property Review Committee to meet in person so that people who may be impacted, it'd be easy for them to come and be heard. And so that's, that's my hope because next to, you know, your life and your health, you know, your property is, is usually typically the most valuable thing you have. And we need to ensure that in those situations, we're making sure people get the help they need so that they don't lose their legacy and their opportunity for generational wealth. That's all I have.
So for the last, since the last council meeting, we've been wrapping up budget talks, and as you see with so many first readings of ordinances, you know, there was a lot to push through there, half of which didn't make it. So that's, that's, that's a first as I try to squeeze through the end of my presidency. You can tell what I was doing there. I want to piggyback off of what Ms. Faulkner was talking about a little bit. So this is going to sound a lot like my council report that I have to give Sunday to my other employee, employers with church council. I'll tell you, we, we had a constituent come in and complain about how council doesn't do anything for youth a few months ago. And, and I remember like going down the line and being able to say what everyone on council has done for youth and it being, you know, pretty notable contributions. And then, as we talk about the, as the overflow shelter is at capacity, as this upcoming Tuesday, there's a, with county council, you know, not our body, there's a two million dollar transfer away from homeless funds into EMS services. And EMS services are by state law a requirement of municipalities, not of the county, so this is particularly concerning. But as, as stuff like that happens in the midst of us, members of council now and in recent years have been, have really put their time and efforts backing up these concerns. And I think about the time before I was on council, one of the first times I met Liz Allen was that she was following, for a story, following and spending time with a homeless woman, and she picked her up off the side of the street, asking where she was going, and the woman was going to my church. So that was one of the first times I met Liz, was at my church while she was with a homeless woman in the car and writing an article about it. And she had, she's probably got three or four articles about that. And the first time I met Kathy Schoff, she was on a rush to get out of a meeting at City Hall because one of her homeless friends was in trouble and getting kicked out of the store across the street because he was drunk. And I said, "He's drunk at ten o'clock in the morning at Lucky's?" And she goes, "Yeah." And I was like, "I know the guy, I'll help you out with that one." And when she realized, I actually knew the guy and we were walking down the street together, and he greeted me first. And now that guy's functional, he's, he was homeless for eighteen years, he's got an apartment, he's, he drinks beer instead of vodka, and he's employed. Mel went to a fundraiser with me back before I was on council, we sat together at a comedy show that, that Mayor Shember emceed to raise money for the homeless. You know, I, I know Mike, when the homeless shelter was uptown, which meant that they were going to be at the Upper Room in the morning, or during the day, and they were going to be up on East Twenty-Sixth Street, and that's a long walk. Mike borrowed his church van and drove him for two weeks every evening, and did every, did you do every morning too, or was it just evenings?
Back downtown.
Yep. Twice a day he was driving. So people that can, as Susanna pointed out, she's going to be helping out the overflow shelter last Saturday and this Saturday, and, and I do, I do my part as well. I, I really, as you see the challenges in front of the city and as you, and as you wonder what council is doing to, to address them, I really want the public to feel confident that it is the passion of our hearts to address these big concerns and that many of us are putting in effort in non-political ways to make these ends and to address the least of these in our community. But that's all cutting into my, my Sunday council report, so, so let me just leave it there and, and assure you that we'll finish out this year strong. Thank you.
We all do good when everyone is doing good, so I definitely understand the support that we need to do for all of our community members.
Nothing from the Controller's Office? Solicitor?
No.
From the mayor's office, Renee?
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. First, regarding the Fly Erie Fund, I want to thank everyone who is here from the airport and from the chamber, and I wanted to let council know that Chris Groner is working on drafting a funding proposal that would not impact the general fund budget. We see this as an economic development issue, and so what we're... We see this as an economic development issue, and so what we're going to be looking at doing is using the city's revolving loan funds and the interest that rolls off of those to help fund a contribution from the city. So I wanted to make you aware that that proposal will be forthcoming from Chris Groner and our Department of Economic and Community Development. I also wanted to just quickly draw attention to the passage of the appropriation of the three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars for the crisis intervention teams. We have our first meeting with DOJ today. We are very excited that we will, and under contractual notice, the contract with Safe Harbor will enable us to hire, will enable Safe Harbor to hire two dedicated crisis services staff members who will accompany our police officers when responding to people in crisis. And so the vast majority of that grant goes to Safe Harbor in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars, and the remainder is to pay for our officers to go to additional training. Third, our press conference tomorrow will be to announce the recipients of the twenty twenty-three flagship fund awards, and that was the transfer that you approved today from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund. And again, the interest off of the revolving loan fund pays for those grants. So we will be announcing the recipients tomorrow and also providing an update on LERTA. And then I also wanted to recognize the Erie Downtown Partnership for all their work on downtown delights, all of their sponsors, and also our Public Works team that helped with setup, and our Erie Police Department, Erie Police Department, who kept everyone safe. And then I did want to draw attention to the movie in Perry Square this Saturday, or this December eighth, Friday, is The Muppets, The Muppets Christmas Carol from five to seven P.M. in Perry Square. Thanks to the Perry Square Alliance, this event is free, and they invite people to wear ugly sweaters. And the Holiday Village shops will be open with goodies, beverages, and free hot cocoa, as well as the ice skating rinks. So we invite everyone to come on downtown. Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. And with that, meeting adjourned.